All right, well, good evening. Today is June 15th. Middle of June already, unbelievable. Today is June 15th County Commission Meeting, Rowan County. It's good to have everyone joining us tonight. As is our tradition, we'll begin with a couple of things. We'll have invocation by our chaplain. This invocation is for the commissioners. It's not for the general public. It's for us certainly these days as always, there's a lot of decisions being made and we seek wisdom in doing that. We don't take this lightly. And so it's important for us to focus, bring our attention to this moment. And then following that, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance. So commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started. We've got Chaplain Taylor's with us, right?
Yes.
All right. Chaplain Taylor?
Lord, I thank God I'm coming to you tonight in behalf of the county commissioners, Lord. I pray, Lord, you give them wisdom they need tonight at this meeting tonight as always, dear Lord. Thank for the time of preparation they've made for this meeting, but all the meetings, dear Lord, thank for their seriousness they have, Lord, and the job they do for Rowan County. Blessings upon them, help them, Lord, and be with them and guide them and direct them, dear Lord. Thanks for the privilege we have tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 If you'll join me with a pledge, I pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain Taylor, as always, for being with us. I come to you from South Carolina today. So the miracle of Zoom, someone's already asked me if I'm calling from a camper. No, I'm not. I'm not calling. I'm not zooming in from a camper. So anyway, it's good to be with you all. All right, we've got some changes to the agenda. I know Leslie's on here and Leslie has something on the consent agenda. Leslie, you there?
I am. The contract was loaded for Salcoa Contracting for the Dan Nicholas Park Concession Project. Not the right contract. It still had old numbers in it. So I emailed all the commissioners, Carolyn, Aaron, and others, the new contract that should be approved.
All right, so then do we have a motion to exchange what was the one that was provided in the original pack and exchange it for the correct one? Do we have a motion to do that?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, then.
Thank you.
I spoke, yes, I'm sorry, thank you, Leslie. Then I spoke to each of you about adding an item regarding waiving some dump fees. And if you don't mind, we'll add that as item 5A to the active agenda, item 5A. So are there any other items that need to be added or deleted to the agenda? All right, hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
So moved.
Craig, and then Jim, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. The minutes from May 27th, special call meeting, June 1 budget work session and the June 1 regular meeting and the June 8 special meeting have been provided for us. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from those meetings?
So moved.
All right, Judy, in a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Then the consent agenda, the amended consent agenda has been provided. And do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Judy and Jim, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, do we have April and Randy? Do we have anyone last call on on public comment?
All right, I'll make another call. If there's anyone that's wishing to speak during public comment, if you're dialed in, you can press star nine. Or if you're in the app, you can raise your hand. We'll give you a moment to do that.
All right, we don't see any, so then we'll move on and we'll move to the agenda item number three. And that is public hearing for Z 01-20. And Shane Stewart will be leading this. Shane, hello, how are you?
I'm great, Mr. Chairman.
Good beard still looking good?
Hey, unlike my head, so.
Well, I think we've discussed the possibility of a comb over.
Well, we'll give it a try.
Hey, come on, Bob's beautiful.
It is, especially on him.
Well, thank you. For this request here, we have a rezoning application from the Oden family for their property at the 8600 block of Bringle Ferry Road. Take a look at the next slide. You'll see a vicinity map that shows you proximity of the subject site outlined in blue and its relationship to High Rock Lake, which is very close. And property is just right there at the split off a pool road. And back in 2000, the Oden family had interest of starting a pier and dock construction business that did not materialize. And as such, the board's seen a few of these, but it's not real common. We have conditional districts that lie idle. But after two years, they need to be considered back to a general. And currently, the CBI CD request would be to rural agricultural, which on this screen here you see in yellow in the color. The next slide, you'll see the 2018 aerial imagery. And you see the 8.4 acre site is 100% wooded. And you see the properties on the south and also east are good sized tracks wooded as well. And then on the north and east or excuse me, west, there are some adjacent residences in the area, but by and large, a pretty rural pocket right here. On the next slide, you'll see some pictures around the area. They don't tell a lot more than what you've seen with the map because there's not much immediately adjacent to the site. Across the street, there's a couple houses, but bordering tracks are wooded and primarily vacant. And on the next slide, you'll see a comparison of the uses in the current district, which is pretty simple. Only pier and dock construction was the only thing requested by the owners in 2000. The proposed change will open it up to the typical allowances in the RA district. And one thing of note, these uses you see here are primarily business related. Rural home occupations are fair game and I believe the owners or their family might be interested in such. So it does permit business if the owner lives on the property or the business operator. So definitely want to make sure that was clear for folks. As we take a look at the next slide, you'll see the Eastern Area Land Use Plan. The white box outlines the general area we're speaking of. And you see the orange color signifying area two for the planning area, which is primarily along High Rock Lake properties and also tucked in and around our municipalities. Even though rural businesses are often encouraged along the thoroughfares, area two is primarily zoned RA and would definitely be in keeping with the request. As we take a look at the next slide here, as common with any rezoning request, we send letters out to joint property owners within 100 feet and post a sign. Both of those were done on June 3rd and then add the Salisbury Post, two different publications and our website as well. And lastly, we'll look at the procedures for tonight. On the next slide, the planning board did recommend approval unanimously eight oh. They have an adopted statement for the board's consideration here at the bottom of the slide. So we would need a motion to approve now table and then also the motion for the statement. Any questions of the board?
Jay, did you have anybody that's an adjacent resident have any issue with this rezoning?
No, sir. We had one person called that was only interested in the purpose of the request.
Thank you.
Shane, as I look at the site map, the aerial photograph, is the majority of that land being farmed now? Or is it just scrub, you know, bushes and trees?
Primarily hardwoods. There's a small area of pine trees, but you look at the site here. This was from 2018, but from being at the site recently, it has a small driveway that's placed in the property. And I think the owners have interest of probably keeping the majority of the trees there, putting in a one house and a small business.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other questions for Shane? All right, if not, then what we're going to do is we're going to open up the floor to conduct a public hearing. We'll leave that open and we'll wait on April and to see if we've got anyone, Randy, anyone that comes in for public comment, like to speak for or against, anything to say about this?
Anyone joining us by phone can press star nine. Anyone joining us through the Zoom app can use the raise hand function to note that you'd like to speak during the public comment. Not seeing anyone at this time, Chairman.
All right, then we will close the public hearing. And what we'll need to do is we'll need to offer up and vote on a statement of consistency. I've got that here. Does anyone else have it? Like to read it? I've got it if we, okay, there it is. Z 01-20 is consistent with Eastern Area Land Use Plan is reasonable in the in the public interest based on the following. Request is consistent with area two of the plan, no adverse impact on neighbors beneficial to the owner by transitioning from an expired conditional district to a general zoning district. And so I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All right, and Craig seconded. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
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 And would remind the public, this went before planning board and was voted on unanimously eight zero. So then do we have a motion to approve Z 01-20?
So moved.
Craig and Jim second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, Shane, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your work on this.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number four, financial report. Ms. Leslie?
Hi, again, I'll wait. And here are graphs that you are familiar with, just updated by another month. So the first graph is annual cumulative current year property tax comparisons. And through the month of April, the tax collectors department has collected 85,555,313 dollars. That is actually 100.6% of budget through the month of April. Typically, we would see about another 2 million in collections over the last two months of the year. Collections have slowed down, but we're in good shape. In the last three years, the percent of budget collected was 98, 99, and 100%. The next graph shows sales tax. This is through the month of February and we have received 18,364,926 dollars. That is a $1.1 million increase over prior year, which equates to 6.5%. As a percent of budget, it's 70% of budget. And the prior three years, we were at 69, 67, and 67% of budget. We expect March to be the first month that could be impacted by the coronavirus. But really, I'm expecting to see the change in the months of April, May, and June. But I do not think we have seen that difference yet. The next graph is annual cumulative revenue comparison. So through the month of May, in total, we have received 134.2 million dollars, which is 89% of budget. The two years prior, we're at 89% of budget also. And 2017 was at 88% of budget. So our revenues are running right with everything that we've seen in the past. The difference is going to be the sales tax that we actually receive in the months of July, August, and September. And those show will show in the column that says final. So it'll be a while before we have those numbers in. And the last graph is annual cumulative expenditure comparisons. Through the month of May, we have expended 134.5 million dollars. That is 81% of budget. And the three prior years were 82%, 83%, and 82% of budget. So expenditures are where I would expect them to be at this time. Are there any questions?
In the next couple of months, we might.
That's true. I'll be answering questions then.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you, Leslie, very much. Move on. Item number five just has to do with typically the second meeting, second monthly meeting in July, we typically skip. So wanted to get a sense of the board, if you all were okay with doing that again in 2020.
Fine by me.
What's the date of the first meeting?
July 2nd.
No, 6.
Oh, 6th, I'm sorry, 6th. So that's the weekend of the 4th, isn't it? We want to think about moving that to Tuesday or something?
Moving it to the next week since we're just going to have one meeting.
So move it to the 13th instead?
I just think a lot of people are going to be on vacation and traveling. I think it'd be more convenient for us to move it a week and then that way we're splitting the month up with that one meeting instead of putting it at the very front.
Are we going to do 3 o'clock or 6 o'clock?
Well, since we're Zooming, I don't really think it matters. I would prefer a 3 o'clock meeting if that works for everybody else.
Staff, Carolyn and Aaron, Leslie, would the 13th be okay with y'all?
This is Leslie, it's fine with me.
This is Aaron, it's fine with me.
According to Jay, we would need to formally cancel the regular meeting and then set up a special call meeting for the 13th.
We're going to have to cancel both meetings and then set just a special call meeting for them?
Sounds that way, yes, sir. Jay, is that okay with you?
Yes, it's just when you when you change meetings by that much, you just need to cancel it and set a special.
Okay. All right. All right, so we would cancel the first and third Monday meeting. We do instead a meeting on the 13th at 3 o'clock. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Second.
We have a second, all right. Thank you, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. You know, the one thing I didn't think about was was Mike. Mike, are you going to be back by then?
No, but I wouldn't have been able to make the one on the second either.
Well, would you be able to make a 6 o'clock meeting?
Usually I can make the evening meeting.
Would there be, would it be okay with the commissioners if we changed that to 6 o'clock? Because of our Commissioner Caskey, that way it'd give him opportunity to join us?
Absolutely.
All right.
Yep.
Then I make a motion that we revise that that motion and that we make it a 6:00 PM meeting instead of 3:00 PM.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? Mike, is that work?
Oh, yes, that's fine, thank you.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, item 5A is just, I spoke with the commissioners and with the county manager. As you guys know, the school in East Spencer had burned years ago. And so folks have been working to get that cleaned up. And so the SC May Fox School, they're working on getting that cleaned up. And they have a contractor now that is going to begin cleanup of the burned, the burned area. And so they contacted us and asked, would we be willing to waive the dump fees for taking brick and all that to the dump? And so we spoke with the commissioners, everyone was in favor of that. That's a good thing because it helps East Spencer and kind of their visual as you come into East Spencer. It's good for the schools, good for the community, good for the county. It's good for everybody and some of the county can get behind and contribute too. So I'll make that motion that we allow them, we'll waive the dump fees for those materials that come out of that in the cleanup.
Second.
All right, we have a second, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask that possibly this go through the leadership of East Spencer, only because I don't, there's no problem with me and the charter school. I think you know that. But we're out, I mean, I definitely support this. I just want to have a little bit more control on it as far as to make sure that what's going to the landfill is actually product that's coming off that job site. Because, and the reason I say that, this contractor, we don't know him. We know the charter school and, you know, and I don't want to end up, you know, having several hundred tons of material coming in because it's not coming from the school. So I'd like to have somebody that kind of looks at that situation to make sure that's what's happening.
Then how do you want to, how do you want to do that?
I would just like to ask that the town of East Spencer be the one that calls and tells them the truck's on the way and that they know that that's where it's coming from.
Okay.
Or that or have a liaison from the charter school manage that situation. Not trying to be difficult, just think we owe it to the taxpayers to make sure that since we have a third party involved in this, that we have some type of control over how it's handled.
Yes, so could we do it through the charter school?
That would be fine if they wanted to have one of their board members be the one that is in charge of making sure that the landfill is contacted, letting them know that there is a truck on the way and that it is the charter school.
Yeah, let's do that because East Spencer doesn't own this now that the folks from the school do. And so we'll, we'll, we'll work through them. I think that works, all right?
Okay.
What are they, what are they going to do to make sure there's no asbestos in that stuff?
Because we, there's going to be asbestos in it in California.
Well, that's what we found in all the older buildings that we've looked at.
One of the things that's held up progress on that particular site, Jim, is the fact that there is a lot of, I don't want to use the word contamination, but there's a lot of remediation that has to be done. And it has to be specially packaged and has to be contained within its own membrane as well as barrels in some cases. So I know this is going to be an expensive project and that's why I say I'm behind it 100%. But I just want to make sure that what goes in the landfill at no charge is coming off that job site.
Yeah.
So can that be?
Does the landfill check what's coming in?
They will on this type situation because they have different areas that that material has to be put into. They don't just let you back up and dump. They have to examine it and make sure that the type of material that being offloaded meets certain criteria. Because actually, the landfill is staged in certain areas and according to what you're bringing in as to what area it has to go into. So, but, but, you know, I'll let the landfill fellows or environmental take care of that. That's their job. But would you like for me to reach out to Tony Hillion, since he's on the board? And see if he wouldn't put together some type of volunteer that has the time to make sure this happens?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd be happy to.
Perfect, all right, good. All right, so we'll go ahead and make the motion that we work with the board to coordinate with our landfill to dispose of those materials that come off of the Dunbar Fire Area. And Craig will give Tony a call.
Actually, what I'd like to do is reach out to Caleb Sinclair and have him and me and Tony get together and work out a strategic plan on how this needs to be done so that we don't hold them up. And, you know, we don't have any confusion over what's going on.
That's good. I think the important part here is that we, we go ahead and make, make a motion and pass that we waive, we waive the fees. So I'll make, make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, and any other discussions? All right, thank you. Be a good project for East Spencer and for the school. I know they'll be glad to get that cleaned up. That's a good thing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Thanks, Craig. All right, item number six, budget amendments. We have a motion to approve those budget amendments that have been provided.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Craig second. All in favor say aye.
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 All right, item number seven, first thing we need to do, a couple of weeks ago, we had a budget here, budget workshop and then budget hearing. And we left open until today, our public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2021 operating budget. So I'm going to close that hearing now officially. So the public hearing is closed and then we need to work to adopt our budget amendments. There's, we'll go through these one at a time and if there's some changes that need to be made. The first item that we'll look at is the general fund number 101. And if you recall, there were two things, two changes that were made to that general fund. And that was at the request of Commissioner Caskey to add $1,500 to Rowan Crime Stoppers. $1,500 to Rowan Crime Stoppers. And then the second one was to add $50,000 for a placeholder for rural broadband. And then we're going to go out and seek RFQs on that to begin moving on that since here just we found in the past few weeks that the grants that are going out by the state of North Carolina are delayed. So this has changed our action. Our action was, we were really looking to July 1 for these grants and that was what our action was moving toward. Those grants are delayed, so we are changing that action and moving to another action. And that action is to move out on our own. move out on our own and uh try to partner with a company to begin to uh develop that uh rural internet. So um I think we'll, what we'll need to do is we'll need to vote individually on those two as a change to the uh to the general fund uh one oh one. So um, I make a motion for the or, or Mike, do you want to make a motion on the fifteen hundred dollar?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I make a motion that uh we put fifteen hundred dollars in the budget for uh Rowan County Crime Stoppers.
All right, do we have a second? Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then uh I make a motion that we add fifty thousand dollars um and, and put that um again as a reserve uh to move forward uh in the process of uh, of a rural broadband um, a project here in Rowan County and make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then uh we'll need a motion uh to approve the general fund one oh one. Do we have a motion to approve general fund?
I move.
Second.
Second. All right, Judy, second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then uh
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, can I ask um with those motions, do you want the overall budget to increase or did you want to decrease contingency? Currently contingency has seventy thousand in it.
Yes, that, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, that was as discussed in our last meeting. Uh, the manager said that would come from contingency.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
The next item is item two zero one. That's fire districts. We have a couple of requests in the fire districts. I know that uh Jim Green and I went to the Scots Irish Fire District to their uh public hearing. And uh, no one opposed that. Uh, they are currently at a six cent rate and requesting that we go to nine. The second one was South Salisbury. Uh, Mike. Like you and I talked about this and um what was your recommend, what, 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 what did we talk about on that? Man, I'm leaving my head now.
The um, to cap that at nine, nine also instead of
Yeah, they're, they're at eight and a quarter and so um I think we had talked about going to nine on that as well. Was that right?
Yeah, I think they asked for
nine, seven, five, nine and three quarters. So nine, seven, five. All of the rest uh remain the same. So the uh Le- Leslie, how, how do you want us to do this? Do, do we need to vote on individually Scots Irish and South Salisbury? Or would we, we vote on the entire uh budget for fire districts two zero one with those two changes?
Um, that's fine.
Okay, we can do that.
Yes.
Then do we have a motion to approve Fund two zero one Fire District Fund with the changes of nine cents at Scots Irish and nine cents at South Salisbury?
So moved.
All right, Judy, uh, is a motion. Do we have a second? All right, Jim, second. Any discussion?
Mister Chairman, I remember looking at the manager's budget and it said in big, bold letters, no tax increase. Well, this is a tax increase. And, and I think going from six to, to nine cents is a fifty percent tax increase in one year. I just don't think that's doable and I don't think it's prudent at this point.
Um, I, I understand that. Jim could speak up to this. I was not able to attend the South Salisbury Fire District Meeting. Uh, maybe uh, maybe Mike did. I know that we went to the Scots Irish. Uh, we were there for probably an hour and a half or two hours. Uh, there was the ju- some, some general public was there, taxpayers, homeowners, landowners were there. And uh they were in full support of that. I mean, they kind of understand we either need to start putting manufacturing plants in Scotch Irish area to raise their um, their tax base or uh they, they just, they you know, ju- are just needing uh some more tax revenue because of issues they've got. Jim, do you want to speak to that, Annie?
Yeah, I, I would uh, Craig, I agree with you that, that nine cent rate is high uh for the general public, but Scotch Irish has a tax base of a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. Uh, they barely bring in seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars a year. And trying to run a fire department on seventy-five thousand a year is, is is almost not doable. They had a breakdown last year. They had one vehicle that had a uh, a motor that went bad on one of their newer trucks. And they had to go back in and refinance the thing for a few years. And that was the only way that they could get enough money to get it back on the road. Uh, they have uh what, little money they have in contingencies they get by having um meals out there. They, they work hard doing that. And um, the, when they have to pay a matching grant to get anything, it, it's a real problem for uh raising twenty, let's say they get a grant uh of a hundred thousand dollars and, and it's twenty percent matching. That's a big issue to them. They just uh have a real tough time and buying new equipment is impossible for them.
Yeah.
And uh I just think uh for the safety of the firemen for the overall uh good of that fire department, I, I ask that, that you uh vote in favor of this tax increase.
Well, Jim, I'm well aware of the financial hurdles that Scotch Irish has to have and I, and I understand it. But at the same time, you know, we're, we're in some tough times right now and making that big jump is, is, is just not sitting very well with me. I could see doing something incremental. You know, going maybe to seven and a half and then we'll see how that works, but going to fifty percent tax increase. I mean, you know, we beat ourselves to death as the commission to keep the tax rate low. And now we've got almost every fire department sitting at nine cents. So uh, at some point in time, you just have to say, you know, is it, is it feasible to uh see these guys maybe have to consolidate with another fire department or do something different than what we're doing? But raising taxes to me is not the answer. So I can't, I can't support nine cents. I could support uh maybe seven and a half. I mean, that would be sitting in the middle. And that's as far as I could go. Of course, it's gonna pass anyway, but I'm just saying I, I don't think it's fair for the general public to see this type of tax increase, not with the economic conditions we have right now.
Well, I, I, I understand that and I appreciate your, your point. Uh, this particular fire department is just uh so hampered with uh uh no tax base out there that anything less than a couple pennies just doesn't give them any money.
I, I understand that. I, I understand it, but it's also you know, I got citizens I gotta take care of too that uh I know they have to be kept safe and I want to do that. But you know, once we raise this tax, they don't ever cut it. So you know, once you get there, it's there from now on and that's what I'm concerned about.
If, if it'll make you feel any better, we're talking about percentage. Um, I, I, I agree with you that they're raising their fire tax by fifty percent. But when you consider the full tax rate, if we're at sixty-six cents, uh, what's current tax sixty?
Sixty-five and three quarters.
Okay, so I called it sixty-six and when you when you add the current six cents and then add three cents to it, it's, it's actually only a four point two percent tax increase on those folks that are asking for this. So I, I the math is right that it's a fifty percent increase on the fire tax, but overall it's a four point two percent increase on their taxes. So just throwing that out there.
I just want to support what Jim said too. I know the very first time I met the chief out there. You know, he's talked very strongly about their issue of not having a large enough tax base and not being able to replace equipment. And as long as the people out there showed up and they want to have a tax, tax increase so they can be protected in case of a fire, um, I mean, I hope that we can go ahead and okay that.
So Mi- Mike, um, did you go to, did you go to South Salisbury?
Uh, I, I've talked to several of the folks. I didn't uh attend their meeting. Uh, yeah, this is they've come to us last year for a tax increase and um, because they've had some uh things that were like, that they knew was coming, so they've tried to work on it over a few years. You know, last year we talked to them about not doing, I think we did a small tax increase for them. So they could try to rearrange some things. They've lost a lot of um they had a lot of grants that they've lost over the last few years. And then of course, like all the other departments, they've had to bring on um staff during the days because you know, they can't get the volunteers um at work, whatnot. So um they've also, a- and I, uh, they've said some of the things of um I think they have Gil Dan. I think they didn't get as much revenue from Gil Dan as they thought they were gonna get it. I think because of the depreciations. But um, so this is something that they've, they've been trying to work on the last couple of years. So that's why you know, we didn't want to, when we talked about the nine cent because we didn't want to get uh departments above that number.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Mike. All right, so um so here we are. Uh, Craig, thanks for your input. Appreciate it very much. Uh, good points. And uh Jim, Judy, uh Mike, thanks for your input as well. So on um on item two zero one, Fire District, we have uh currently a, a request to go forward with a nine cent tax rate for Scots Irish and a nine cent rate for South Salisbury. So do we have a motion to approve uh the Fire District two zero one with those changes?
So moved.
All right, Judy, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mike, second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, no changes on emergency uh telephone. That's um item two zero two. Do we have a motion to approve budget item two zero two?
I'll move.
All right. Craig and Mike, uh Craig and Mike, motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, the Risk Management Fund, Fund five zero one, uh no changes there that I know of. So a motion to approve in a second, please.
Second.
All right, Judy, uh, motion and Craig, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, thank you. The Landfill Fund, six zero one. Um, no changes there that I'm aware of. A motion in a second to approve landfill fund.
I move.
Craig? Who's second?
Mike.
Uh, Mike, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Airport Fund, again, no changes. Fund number six zero three. Motion in a second to approve those.
I'll move.
Second. All right, thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Water Fund, uh, six zero five, no changes. Motion in a second to approve uh the Water Fund.
I'll move.
Motion, Mike, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I did want to mention one, two, three, four, five, eight. I, I do have uh, the commissioners received uh eight emails from citizens uh regarding uh topics throughout the budget. And uh we, we really appreciate those, uh some good insight on those. And so uh we took those into consideration. And so thank you for doing that. All right, um Leslie, are you unmuted?
Yes, sir.
Are we good?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Jay, are we good?
Yes, we're good. It, it's, we talked about reading the names of the public comments just so, just so they're in the record.
Okay. Uh, we received public comment from uh Kia Whittlesley, uh Pam Bloom, Karen Puckett, uh Mary uh Overholser, I'm sorry. Uh, Nan Lund, Diane Liebovitz, uh Mary James and uh Jennifer Hubbard. So thank you very much uh for participating. All right, um, next item I believe is closed session, isn't it?
Yep.
All right, so closed session speech out here. I move that the board now enter closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one four three, three one eight, one one A one to consider approval of the minutes of the closed session held on March second, twenty twenty and June first, twenty twenty. And one four three, three one eight, one one A five to consider a potential lease at Mid Carolina Regional Airport. So uh, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, and then all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, so uh they'll take us off of this. We won't need to do anything. They'll mute us. And then uh you all have instructions on going to a uh, a closed session voice. So uh we'll be back in a few minutes. So we'll talk to you on the voice call. All right, we're uh, we're back from closed session. So do we have a motion uh to uh come out of closed session?
I'll move.
Second.
Greg motion, Judy second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Greg motion, Judy second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Everyone, have a good day.
Hey, you too.
Have a great week.